Good evening. Today is May 10th, 2021. This is a regular May meeting of the USB 453 Board of Education. We have Ann for roll call. Mrs. Price?
Here.
Mrs. Murphy?
Here.
Mr. Goodman?
Here.
Mrs. Wells?
Here.
Mr. Carney?
I'm here.
Mr. Powell?
Here.
And I'm here as President Douglas Darling. Go ahead and stand for the President's pledge to leave it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you be seated, please? Dr. Rowe, if we can have a district mission statement?
Yes, it's to prepare every student for success in every classroom every day.
Thank you. Do we have any scheduled patronage? We do not, thank you. I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
We have a motion by Mrs. Wells and a second by Mrs. Price. All those in favor, raise a hand. Seven zero. Thank you very much. Moving on to agenda item number two, consent agenda. Item number two going one is the check register, two point two is the gift log, two point three is the minutes, two point four is the treasurer's report, two point five is Avid District Leadership, two point six is the ed mentum, Calvert Curriculum and Student Resources Virtual School Renewal, two point seven are employee handbook, two point eight is the firewall support renewal, two point nine IDEA VI-B application certifications for 2021, 2022. Twenty ten is Panak Pato renewal.
What's that? Panakto?
Panato, okay. Easy for you to say. Two point eleven thought exchange renewal and two point twelve water fountains.
I have a question of clarification before we move forward with this, if I may.
Certainly.
For the employee handbook, are we doing this as a final vote that is approved as it's written right now?
Yeah, so this will be the second reading.
Yeah, I found some errors in it. The glossary did not fit with the index, did not fit with all the pages. So I didn't know if maybe we should have that actually where it does fit before we approve it or we...
In the past, we approve it because until it's approved, they don't want to re-index the thing as far as...
Okay, I just wanted to...
That's what we typically do.
Okay.
Thank you for your question, though.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, now I have a motion.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as it's written. Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Murphy and a second by Mrs. Wells. All those in favor? Seven zero. Now the fun part. Item number four, recognitions.
We have with us tonight the JROPC program national champion ladies. So we will turn it over to the commander.
Nobody knows what they expect.
So hey, so I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Maddie Haddock here in just a second so she can say whatever her heart feels like saying. But before she speaks, look at them, I mean. You guys are incredible, you see me every morning. Hey, so I just wanted to congratulate these ladies and let the board know how amazing it is what they've done. So we have a lot of teams. All of our kids are excellent. They all work very, very hard. They all train very, very hard, but there's no other team at our school that goes all year like this. Our season starts on day one, sometimes even before the school year starts. And our Nationals event isn't until the very end of the school year. As you can tell, we just came back. The amount of dedication and time that these ladies put in is phenomenal. They're at school every morning, usually before six in the morning. This year, we started a little bit later because COVID called, we weren't allowed in as early as we would like. But that's the amount of time and effort and hard work it takes. About an hour and a half a day of practice every day before school starts. Sometimes they come in later, especially if they're on other parts of the team, like our color gardens that they come in and train again after school. Sometimes we have some weekends. The amount of work that these ladies did is phenomenal. And I just can't express it because there's nothing else that goes that long. You know, a lot of our teams like the Raiders, we get a lot of kudos, a lot of recognition. They're usually done by October. These ladies start at the same time and they just keep working and working and working. And when it comes to winning, what we did was really a rarity. It's amazing what they've done. A lot of things are very subjective. It's a point. You either cross the finish line in 32 seconds or the other team beats you by a second. Not only do we have to subjectively beat the other teams, but they have to objectively, excuse me, objectively and subjectively. I'm getting my words all mixed up, my apologies. But usually it's very objective, you know, either they did or they didn't. Not only do they have to objectively beat the other teams, but they also have to subjectively convince the judges. And that's what makes it hard because you can have a perfect performance. If the judges weren't wowed, you could lose to another team. It's really hard to do that. It's really hard to train for something that there is no standard of impressing a judge. Usually you have four judges there and all four judges, they find something very different of what impresses them. So these ladies went out, they went to the national level. At the national level, they objectively beat the other teams on points on the scorecards and they subjectively wowed all the judges. And that is very hard to do. We can go back next year, I'll be honest, with the exact same routine. We'll have four new judges and we'll have to convince them again. We never know what the results are going to be. But I want to just, you know, give them some kudos because it's their hard work. And Ms. Powell, if you'd like to say?
First, I want to say thank you to you guys for letting us continue the season, letting us actually go to Nationals, letting us practice the way we do and letting just us continue. And then I want to thank you guys. Obviously, we wouldn't be able to do it without everyone, even the people that aren't here today. I just want to thank you all. We all worked really hard. We all worked together as a team. We became a family at the end of the day. We all are sisters. We all help each other when times are in need. So none of us, this would not have been able to happen if it wasn't for you guys. So thank you to you guys, Kate. I love you all. We are all sisters. We are all together as one. This is really lame, I'm sorry. Then again, winning Nationals, it's a goal that we set at the beginning of the year. And at the end of the year, being able to say that we won Nationals, we did it, and we are better than ever. Next year, with all of us seniors leaving, I want to say good luck. It's going to be amazing. You guys are going to do wonderful. I think that's it. Again, I just want to say thank you to everyone involved, everyone helping us along the way.
So how many are coming back?
What was that?
How many are coming back?
I believe everyone here that's not a senior is coming back. And we have some ladies that are not here today with work and extracurricular activities and little things like that. So there's more people coming back. This isn't, this isn't it.
I guess the seniors jumped over here.
Yes, we have us three seniors.
So we have 18 ladies total on the team. We started the year off with more, but I'll be honest, the amount of dedication to stick out the year like that, you lose, you lose ladies due to attrition. It's just hard to wake up every morning like that and still do good on your school and keep your grades up. And that's something that, you know, we focus on. You got to keep those grades up. So it's really tough. So what you see here are the ladies that really gutted it out for the entire year. I'll be honest, I don't remember the number we started off. It was in the high twenties. We're down to 18. Out of the 18, four of them are seniors. Anybody you see not here tonight, they're at work. So a lot of these ladies, they have jobs. Matter of fact, a lot of ladies you see here tonight took off tonight to be here as part of the team. So it's a huge time commitment for all these ladies to balance work and school and practice and the team commitments. So out of the 18, sir, we'll have 14 come back next year. And I hope all 14 are on the team again.
Plus new people from freshman?
Freshmen, yeah, that are coming in. I'm sure we are going to have a lot more.
Mrs. Murphy, you have something for us?
I do have something.
Jake, would it be better to do it over by the L V than the planers?
I think they're trying to get a photo of you guys. Why don't you guys sign up for L V behind you?
We're going to read this first. So I have certificate of recognition for the Leavenworth High School JROPC Cavalry Angels for outstanding levels of dedication, perseverance, teamwork, school pride and community service, and dominate individually and team accomplishments throughout the competition season. This is awarded on this day, sixth day of May, 2020. That's signed by the President Douglas Darling and Dr. Mike Rowe. Congratulations. Tell him we'll turn this one.
Get everybody's picture over there.
And if you guys want to come in, come on.
I get one more picture.
Come on in. Dr. ...
Old man here, that's not easy to follow.
Thank you. There's a small job right here.
I know. We didn't get them around the corner and see whether it was fun.
I'll get another couple of pictures there. Congratulations, well done.
Who's who? Get off on the Nerlens, same place, look at the same place.
Did I hear the request for a billboard again?
Yes, sir.
I heard that. I heard that was a rumor.
Not a rumor, not a rumor.
Congratulations, ladies.
Well done, well done.
I will say one thing, the Midwest is a small community when it comes to drill. It was really nice being at that meet. Every year, San Antonio, not Texas, they dominate that meet. I don't know what's going on in the water in San Antonio, but you hear the San Antonio, San Antonio over and over get called up that year. This year, the Midwest was dominating. You had Missouri Military Academy, which is close by, we consider them a competitor. We go to all their events, they come to all of ours. You had Ozark there, you had us. The three of our schools really dominate. So the Midwest was representing well across the U.S. And I want to say that for one reason because there's actually two levels. We have the Masters level, which is the highest level you can compete at. You have the Challenge level. So if you hear anybody from Ozark High School saying they're the national champions, they're the national champions at the Challenge level. This is the Masters level national champions.
It's not the water, it's the girls.
Congratulations, ladies.
Well done.
Ladies, I've been instructed by my daughter Jacqueline to say hi to you.
Hi.
So Zach always said my back.
And then y'all?
No, sir, I don't know. We're not used to this. We had a girl school with a national champion in my school history. It's been about 10 years since we played like second place.
They won last year.
So it's been a bit.
Did I hear a formal request for a billboard? No, I'm still not sure we got a formal request.
Oh, they had that.
I think we got requests. We'll take but...
They got the request before they got home.
And I'm sorry, I want to add one of the sentiments that Ms. Maddie Haddock said. Thank you to the board, thank you to our administration for letting us have this season. It would have been too easy to say no. But you guys struggled through how to make it happen. We struggled through how to fit within the rules to make it happen. And we were very happy that this season happened period. Yeah, I think it shows a lot of resilience. It was probably powerful, not just the girls, but our whole community. Being able to come together still do this. Except, you know, COVID and all the, all that we had to worry about. I just think that thanks to the one more thing that's over all the girls. That's just a senior problem that at the end of a really pretty year, they come out winning the national championship like that when they could have just kind of homesteaded it too hard. We did.
Also, I also wanted to thank the parents. The parents were the ones that supplied food and meats and all that. So thank you, parents, for supporting us in that way. Being there behind us throughout the whole season was great. Added a little bit of normalcy to the season. So thank you, parents.
Does anyone have a billboard back there?
Okay, you still got finals going ahead, so go study.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item number five, student handbook. This is a first brief. As a thing says, if you have questions or questions, send them to Jake and he gets to consolidate all those things and work out all the rough edges on it. All right. Agenda item number six, chemistry, gas transport.
So we brought this before the board last month. There was a percentage, we were off a percent when we presented it to the board. So it actually is $11,000 and some change right there. Could you give the exact number? I don't have that written down.
$11,240 and 11 cents.
And you want to explain a little bit about that?
So the, in April, when we brought the bill to the board under the advice from K A S B and K JUP, it was just to pay the per unit charge for actual gas use. And after the board meeting, then they said it was okay to pay the transportation fee for the gas being delivered to us to use. So that's what the $11,000 is, is the transportation fees. The, we are still disputing the overall charge above the $4.57 that we paid. So that's still in dispute.
Was the transportation fee higher than normal as well?
There, there was a slight increase, but it was not exorbitant.
So we would need a motion from the board to pay the additional $11,240 and 11 cents to symmetry gas transport?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the amount of $11,240 and 11 cents to symmetry gas for the transportation fees.
Motion by Mrs. Wells, second by Mrs. Murphy, correct? Okay. Any other further discussion? Raise a hand. Seven zero. Moving on to an item of great deal of interest in some quarters, number seven, Henry Leavenworth Elementary Bus Lane.
So Brian's going to pull up some slides. These slides were from Matt last week, so nothing's changed on, on that. Mr. Darling had asked me to bring this back before the board. Matt would have been here, but he's being a dad tonight, which I encourage him wholeheartedly to go to his daughter's event and that I would get us through this presentation. Basically, what Mr. Darling asked was to relook at adding the bus lane. You see the bus lane on the top right-hand corner of the picture. That there is the option that it seemed to gain the most interest last month when Matt presented this. The parking lot would be like option C dash two if the board would want to consider that. We do believe, and Matt believes in discussion with him, that we could get the bus lane done over the summer. The parking lot probably, we believe, may be able to get done if the board would want to do that way. But it wouldn't be a guarantee that we would get the parking lot in before August rolled around because we would have to put the bid out, the bid specs, get them back and then get on a company's schedule to be able to get this accomplished. So if you look at what we, and Matt's visited with several different contractors to get quotes, and the quotes are different than bids, the bids could actually come in higher or lower based on current cost of that, Brian, if you'll go to that slide. So our numbers that were put together based on some contract discussion with them. I could go out, I could go out to mine, too.
Would it be, the question I had, was it cheaper to do both at once?
Well, we, we talked about that. We're not sure, Mr. Darling, based on what the, like the schedule of, because like the, the bus lane could be worked in in a smaller schedule than what if they did the parking lot and everything. So it would really be dependent from what we gather, it would really be dependent on the timeframe that the companies would have with that.
So while they're getting it, if you don't mind, to refresh my memory, what do we gain with the bus lane?
So one of the things with the bus lane we would gain is we would gain access, the buses would gain access, free access into our parking lot. So then what, what the dilemma is now and what the holdup is, we have to get our buses in because if we don't get our buses in before we let cars to stack on our property, then it throws off the entire system of transportation. So if we, if we do the bus lane, then the bus lane has free access. And so that would be for bus lane. And then once the buses are in, we would allow daycare vans, the bigger vans, to come in to pick up groups of kids to follow the buses in, which will also help shrink the stacking on the street.
Essentially, parents can start stacking really kind of right.
So right away, we could start getting them into the parking lot, which was...
Not stack on.
Right, and not stack on the street, which won't control the entire stacking. But what that does is it would shrink the timeframe that stacking is actually taking place on the street. So we believe, and Matt went out and he timed it several different days of when cars hurt, when cars hit certain, certain levels, which he presented last month. We believe if the bus lane is there, that cars won't actually start stacking until about 15 to 20 minutes prior to the end of school as opposed to up to over an hour. So they would be, those same people would be within our property and then there would eventually be stacking, but it wouldn't be to the length that it is currently on that, on that. And so talking with Mr. Kramer, the bus lane is something the city would still consider helping participate in cost on that. A parking lot, which I don't blame them, they wouldn't be a part of the parking lot. The parking lot would be something that we would do. Now, if we would go back to the loop area, they would be interested in that. I did talk with Mr. Kramer about some things that the city could possibly consider if we did the bus lane to help facilitate and do that. That's something that he's taken into consideration and exploring those options as well. And so Mr. Darling asked if we could bring that piece to that. And so as Matt, as that email shows, and you can just leave it there, Brian, just like that. So option A was the first, the first loop around. We guesstimated that about 200,000. Option B would be 230,000, 230,000, which that's the longer loop over into the ball fields and around in. And then option C is the bus lane and the parking lot. And that estimation is 250,000.
Do those numbers include the city's input already or would we say these?
Those would be total cost of the project.
Okay, so the city would help, that would be less.
That could be less.
Except for the parking lot.
Right. And until we go actually out for bid, again, these are through conversations that Matt's had with contractors. Prices have fluctuated, I'm sure, over the last 30 days. But it would give the, it would give the board a ballpark area to know that you're probably within 10% one way or the other within that number.
I guess my question is, why that struck me last time we discussed this? Is if we put the bus entrance in, does it not provide value to how we are now managing traffic flow regardless of any of the other options? So for $50,000, are we not going to improve everything that we do if we put the bus lane in?
So the bus lane would, the bus lane was, would help greatly with the flow of, being able to bring people in and out of our parking lot. Plus, it would change, part of the bus lane change is changing those...
Diagonal parking.
That to diagonal parking, which we lose in parking spots, but we, we gain the ease of getting people in and out of that parking spot in a safer manner.
So I guess the reason why I asked the question was maybe it's not just choose one of an option and maybe that option and then choose the other.
Well, this is looking more like an a la carte than...
Yeah, but with that one in particular, though, if it, if it works for everything, and it's $50,000.
And remember, we're taking two class, or two grade levels of school next year. So that, I'm, I'm not opposed to more parking there, but I think we ought to go see what the problem is next August, September. And then if you still need more parking, we can go back and revisit it.
Right, right. And that's why I wanted to bring this up, we're talking $50,000. And it's already a problem of mixing the buses and mixing the cars there. And if we at least go start with that solution, we solve it regardless of whether we stack or don't stack by separating our bus traffic and our car traffic. That's what I'm getting at, is you're right. Maybe we can put the 200-plus thousand dollars out, but right now, we could make what looks to be a minimal investment and with a significant return for whatever choices we make.
Now, some of the other advantages of, can we go back to that parking lot side? Is that instead of having one line of cars coming through the bottom, we can split it out and get two lines of cars, one going down the back end of that parking and one going down the regular middle end of the parking and loop them both back in.
If we added the parking, is that what you're saying or is current? Current.
Yes.
So we would still have, we would still have an in and an out. The bus, the bus one would only be for buses and large vehicles.
No, no, I understand. The buses are still going to come in, but people on the parking lots stack up on the road. They're going to come in. Now, not only do we have the capacity that we currently have, we have the additional capacity of that other line that we can... They would simply have to wait a little bit longer to pick up their kids, but at least they'd be off the road. And the additional benefit of having parking when we have after-school events, which is another sore point in the neighborhoods around.
Right.
So yeah, that line right there.
Right, so you would, and what we would be able to do with stacking is you would be able to come in and stack, start stacking all the way up to right here. Right now, we wouldn't stack in here because our goal is, is not having kids cross blind traffic. Okay? So you're stacking, what you would gain is stacking all along here, all the way around up to here because this would still just be an X and O. And your buses, your buses and every, all the buses, they would come in here and once the buses are in place, then like daycare vans, that are known daycare vans and identified, would be able to follow the buses at that. We've also talked with Easton Bus and they, they like this and they don't have an issue with the buses going left or right off that chute there.
Off the limit.
Right.
Okay, but I don't think you're understanding. Can I have the clicker?
You bet.
Do I need to go up?
You can point at any TV, it should work at any.
Excuse me, I'm talking about right here, you come in, you've also got this lane.
That's, that's if we add it.
That's if we add it.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Because if we add that, not only does that get more cars off of the road, it also solves our parking problem when we have the after-school activities, which...
So if the parking lot was added, Ms. Clampit has already, her and Ms. Mauldon worked with Matt already and looked at some different traffic patterns coming in to the facility. And that, that would be added stacking and it depended upon grade level and how they would dismiss kids. That's how that was, that would be utilized in that, in that manner. If the board waits until after next school year to see what the impact of taking kindergarten out, that could be added at a later time. And also, the additional loop could be added based on need of what you see at that point in time. And so what Mr. Powell was talking was just the bus lane only.
So can I say something? I don't feel like we are listening to the people that are reaching out to us that live in these neighborhoods because they've reached out to us getting that access multiple times to have a co-meeting with the city. Why, why are we still not exploring that so that we can be in the same room and discuss these things? Like the bus lane, definitely. We should do that, that's a low cost. It's going to eliminate problems on our own side. But the big picture is not just us.
And what, and what we talk... And what we talked about, and I may have misunderstood it. What we talked about is when we got the data for the river or the creek that we were going to meet at that point in time. And we thought we might have that earlier than later. And now that information, I think, is scheduled to come to us the end of this month. So that would put, if you wait to the end of this month, and I think that was Mr. Garland's point, if we wait to the end of this month to do that joint and talk to both of them, we most likely wouldn't meet the timeline to do the bus lane. But again, I might have misunderstood, I thought we were talking.
I just think we're getting, we're involving two separate communities within our large community. We're involving this neighborhood with that, and then the creek is going to involve a different neighborhood with that discussion. So I don't know. It all needs to be discussed with them, yes.
Yeah, and I will agree that the bylaws needs discussion, but that's kind of the city's job. We can do a relatively cheap, now fifty thousand dollars is not cheap, but it is compared to a lot of other construction. And take a step forward, which will give us some relief because we don't know the scope and scale of the problem next August. If in August and early September it's still a major problem, we can go back and probably get a much better price for that concrete work because a lot of businesses are busy this summer. At least, that's what my thought is.
So we've already moved the fifth graders out of Leavenworth. So is it still, I mentioned it's still a traffic backup problem.
There is, but next year.
I don't know how much that's going to be solved by moving kindergarten.
Kindergarten and pre-K are all going to be out of there next year. And pre-K, he winds up in front of the building. And I think, I don't know if kindergarten does it or not. So that's, you know, that'll relieve some of that traffic flow, let go through. And I'm not willing, I'm not unwilling, I should say, to have the board relook at this, as I said, at the September meeting. Or maybe even, since we got to have so many meetings in August because of the budget anyway, we could possibly look at it after school starts and get some experience.
I would like to make a motion that we approve going forward with the bus lane for the fifty thousand dollars.
Well, let's not put a price tag on it because the board, you would still have, if the prices come in. It can't move until the board approves of that. But our estimation is it should be somewhere in that neighborhood.
Did you say fifty thousand?
Yes.
Well, that's a, that's one based upon.
I know, but I mean.
We're not going to put that. The motion is that we approve going out for a bid on the bus lane.
Yep, yes, that you approve.
Mrs. Wells made the motion, Mr. Powell seconded.
And then further discussion, the city's going to help us with it to some degree.
Any further discussion, if not?
Oh, yes, I want to discuss something real quick. And it's my option D. Because I still think it's a simple solution without spending a bunch of money to make that one way all the way around. Leaven Street, when you get past the housing area, is not even a legal street for two-lane traffic. The city, they're, I don't, maybe they've got good lawyers, but they're a live building, somebody can correct on that street. If you've ever gone down there, and I'm there every day. And you started from the housing area and you started the second entry to the parking lot on Byless. And it's an inconvenience for like forty-five minutes, fifteen minutes a day, two times a day, man. But, and it's only a mile around there. So I mean, if somebody says that, you know, it's really inconvenient, it's a mile around the loop.
That would be something we talked to the city about.
They did it at Muncie. They did it somewhere else, there's another one, we should go in somewhere like that.
They did it just for parking out by Little Park.
Because I'm out there every day, and to me, it's just too simple. You've got plenty of room on Byless coming around. So if you're in that lane, take down the no parking sign because nobody's paying attention to them. I know we got a waiver, but it's just, whatever amount comes in, it was two fifty, three hundred, a hundred and fifty, whatever, it's just money we don't need to spend for an easy solution, I think, that's all I've got to say about that.
We have a motion on the floor that's been seconded. All of us in favor of going out for bids for the bus entrance, raise a hand. And we, all of us against, we stick one. Thank you very much. A non-controversial item is next, number eight, summer school application.
I asked Ms. Batson to present to the board our summer school plan, numbers, and give you an idea and opportunity to ask questions about summer school and our moving forward with trying to close some of the gaps that we have. We see or parents have seen what their students do to a variety of reasons that go more closely related to the COVID drop. So with that, Ms. Batson, it's all yours.
I'm very excited to share with you kind of where we are this evening. Our summer program is longer and larger than any we've had in many, many years. We'll be through the whole months of June and July, from June seventh through July thirtieth. We'll start in the mornings at eight with breakfast and end at two thirty with dismissal. And in between, it's some exciting times. So with this, as you know, we're preparing every student for success in every classroom, every day. And for us, that's even in the summer. And so one of the things that we were challenged with was how can we do this in a way that feels different than school? Because kids want a break during summer, adults want a break during summer. And in that, make it where it has that level of fun, but also can be instructional. So when we started planning this, we just wanted to dream. What is something, if you, if money wasn't the barrier, if time wasn't the barrier, if having extra hands on deck wasn't the barrier, what could we do? And I think we hit the ball out of the park with some ideas. So our purpose of planning this was to capture some of the lost instructional time, not only for March, but then as students and staff, in all honesty, were in and out this year between hybrid, remote, quarantine, there's been a lot of lost instructional time. It's not really designed to catch kids up per se, but more so to stop that summer slide, which occurs every year, but to prohibit that from happening as much this year and also to spark that interest in being back in school and that questioning and the inquiry. For the high schoolers, it allows them an opportunity to capture some credits so we'll have more students graduating with their peers. For our teachers, it gives them the opportunity to practice doing targeted instruction in small groups with those extra set of hands available. And one of the things I'm most excited about is for our intern positions. So college students that are education majors are coming on as teacher interns. In that, a lot of those students have lost the ability to have practicums this year and have hours in classrooms for observations. This is a way to get them in and let them see what education's about. Our high school has a very active teaching pathway. April Walters runs that program, and those students are coming in as student interns. And then we have several people in our district that have their administration credentials and not really quite sure, like, is administration kind of the right fit for me? So this allows them the opportunity to dip their toes in and become administrative interns and kind of see if this is a step they may want to take in the future. So we have three different programs. Elementary serves K four, intermediate and middle serves five-eight. And then our high schools through nine-twelve, it's Monday through Friday. Breakfast and lunch will be served every day. And then transportation is provided for any student that would like it, K eight, nine-twelve. There's a little asterisk there because it's more of a college-type structure. So students will be coming in and out based on their credits. And then we also have this ability because of our ESER funding this semester. So here is kind of an update. Classroom teachers, lead certified teachers that we have that are currently either employed by us or will be beginning their first year with us next year are our classroom teachers. As I said from the beginning, we want teachers to have a summer too, so I do not have sixty-three for the whole time. I have some that are just June, I have some that are just July, I have some that are mornings, I have some that are afternoons. And then I have some that are absolutely all of June and July. Our program support are our classified staff. And in that, that could be anything that helps out. And that's an area that they have really stepped up and said, yes, we want to be involved, we want to help our kids learn. So I have twenty-one of those currently. Our admin interns, we have six. Teacher interns, once again, college students. In fact, I spoke with one today who's going to TCU in Texas, it's a Leavenworth student who went to college there. We started this with part of our partnership with Benedictine and St. Mary's, but we have students from Wichita, Eploria, KU, K-State. So we have Pitt State, we have from all across. And then, like I said today, was through TCU. And then our student interns, I have thirteen right now. And these are either members of our National Honor Society who work with our students as part of their tutoring program at the high school for their service hours, but also our teaching pathways. All these positions are paid positions, so regardless whether you're a high school student, admin intern, or classified staff, each of them are paid positions. This is as of this afternoon. Our enrollment is absolutely staff-dependent. The number of staff we have for each program determines the number of students we can have. So kindergarten, currently, we have forty. We have a waitlist starting for our kindergarten. Our first and second, we have thirty-two that are enrolled. And we are calling some families that we haven't heard the final answer from before we go on to our waitlist. Third and fourth, you see thirty-four, same thing. Fifth and sixth, we have forty-one students, and we have a waitlist starting for that group. And seventh and eighth, we're at fourteen, we're actively enrolling families for that. And high school has sixty-six currently enrolled. So in that, these numbers change almost hourly, as you can imagine. But that's kind of a snapshot of where we were midday today. So I told you, we had fun. We said, let's dream. So our high schools and college type setting where they're working on their credits using priority standards. Our K four, two units are summer fun and game on. And then five-eight, survivalist and game on. And the summer fun, everything from winter to, I mean, I'm sorry, from weather to solar energy, to the things you might see in vacationing. And the survivalist is the zombies and the Martians and the parasites that come in there. Game on is everything from water play to cardboard arcades, to retro, to board games. Five-eight is culinary challenges, food truck challenges, entrepreneurialship. We're trying to really highlight our high school pathways that we have available in our KC-KCC connection to kind of get kids excited about learning what you can do and some of the options that are available to you at Leavenworth High. So the overall units, the basis of them were created by the teaching and learning team. Teachers will absolutely flesh them out, put their thumbprints on them, and bring their creativity into the units. And students will have individualized small group instruction in reading and math. You see a little asterisk on that, if kids are benchmarking or above, they may not be pulled for those small groups. But students who have deficiencies in there, we will give some extra support. And we want our student interns, as well as our teacher interns, to have input. And so we've told them, here are kind of the ideas. What would you like to see added? What ideas do you have with this? In fact, one of them has emailed several times about an obstacle course to help build stamina to, you know, defend Leavenworth against the zombies. So with that, he is designing an obstacle course to pitch when he comes in. Enrichment activities, you have at least one a week, sometimes more than one. Anything from field trips to area attractions, outdoor challenges. We're bringing in some activities. Green Bush is coming in to do the robotics course, coding and the survivalist challenge. In there, we have some fine arts connections with ceramics, stage makeup, food truck. I said we're building, not an actual truck, obviously, but creating that entrepreneurialship project. So very excited that we have this kind of opportunity. The guest speakers, we're using DreamWakers, who has people from all over the world that zoom into our classroom and talk about their experiences in these careers. Student schedules, this is a potential schedule that they could do, arriving at eight, having breakfast. They do a soft start transition to start the day, go through several rotations, and then ending the day about two-thirty from there. You see, it's a jam-packed full of opportunities for students. So it's kind of, in a nutshell, our summer program.
Staff member, I've got two questions.
Yes, ma'am.
So it's in the three locations, I understand, middle school and high school. Where is the elementary location?
Henry Leavenworth.
And then the other part, since it is going to be a longer program covering both June and July, if a family has, you know, some other thing happening for a week, is that going to be an issue if they're going to be absent for a week?
No, but I've actually had several families reach out in that. We said, we want you or kids to have a summer, we want you to enjoy family trips, go to scout camp, all of the things that you would associate with summer.
Okay, thank you.
So our interns, will they be providing direct instruction or will they be doing the small class? What will that look like?
For our teacher interns, they will be providing some small group instruction under the direction or the supervision of a certified teacher.
Great. And then I'm super concerned that we only have fourteen students enrolled at the middle school. Who's in charge of that, do they need help?
We are getting some help. Part of it was, like I said, it's a staffing issue. And we did not have many staff coming right away, but we've filled some positions up. So that's opened up in there, and hopefully now we'll start getting some more enrollments going.
I think when I saw it, I might have misunderstood. So we have the students that want to do it, we just don't have the staff available to lead that?
We have fourteen right now that have committed firmly to coming, or whatever the number was, I believe it was fourteen. We have not sent it out holistically like we have to the other buildings. K six, we sent out to every family, what is your interest? Seven-eight, we have not been able to do that because of the limited staff that were on that side at the time. However, that has opened up some. And seven-eight sent us names of students that they would like for us to recruit first. And that has happened where the fourteen came from. We're also reaching out, especially to our remote students who have missed quite a bit of instruction for various reasons. That's our second wave of recruiting, and that's where we are right now.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Two questions, if you don't mind, Laura.
Sure.
Because we kind of talked about this before, which was credit recovery, kind of conceptually, credit recovery. Have we threaded where we were with the kids who had Fs and other grade deficiencies going into, you know, last talked about, I think, December, January? So I'm kind of curious where we are now. But are we looking at those students as a population? Because we all know this is a different year. I mean, the chaos and the problems with these kids in different environments and with the teachers. I mean, this has been a challenge for most sides. So this isn't a reflection on that as much as it is recognizing the reality. So are we looking at the kids that we have failing grades and trying to look at whether they're participating in the summer course? And I know we've talked about whether or not there'd be a continuation, summer just being a piece of it and the fall being a whole other battle to go after those kids. But are we threading into the summer school right now? We're kind of looking at which families are coming, which kids are coming? And how does that fit into helping those kids that were failing in that interim period in the midterm?
So the high school absolutely is looking at it. In fact, Ms. Jones, Mr. Vannick and their team counselors, that is what they're using as a priority to how to recruit students. Because at the high school, we're really focused on getting credits captured. Some were, you know, so they can move on to the next class, to the next, or to graduation in some situations. At middle school, I would not say it's been based on failure rate. When we've looked at recruiting, it's been more on just data from different assessments.
Yeah, well, I understand, we're reading the letters that we propose. Yeah, clearly, if I was a parent with a junior right now, I would be really concerned. Yeah, clearly, if I was a parent with a junior right now, I would be really concerned. And so I guess I'd kind of like to see how we're, kind of conceptually, where we're headed to help deal with that group of students that need help. Because it's got to be resource driven as well. I mean, we're doing everything, you're doing everything you can within what we built into the school's structure. But this is more, and that's, and you're doing it with the interns. I think this is fantastic, that you're reaching out and you're looking at other resources. But how does that then relate as we go into the fall with those that we relay, those juniors in, you know, in particular, that we really have to go after to get them back on track for what they want to do after school?
Right, we have a plan to present to the board on that separately from social. But I think we'll answer your question relatively soon.
I appreciate that. But what really triggered it though was you're leveraging interns and others, you know, more resources to get them in the classroom. But thanks, Laura.
Sure.
I have a question if I may. Of course, grades are always, you know, number one, and the most important thing, what education's all about. I do know during the summer, there are the summer programs of where the Raiders have a week or two that they're working out. You've got the football teams out there that are all training at their football softball camp. How are the logistics working around where they're there for two hours? Do they get to do that for the two hours and then go into the rest of the day? Or are they shut out from the sports until they needed to do whatever they needed to do?
Do you mean the students who are participating in the credits?
Yeah.
And that will depend, obviously, on the student. If the student only needs one or two credits, then they have a little more flexibility in their schedule. And we also have coaches that come in early in mornings, we have coaches who stay late afterwards to do open gym hours. So, and I don't know that schedule offhand, but in that, those are some opportunities they could take care of. Another option that's available to families is to use edgenuity, which if a family is, has someone that maybe academically absolutely can get the credit, but perhaps this wasn't their most stay-on-topic type of year, and they really want to get back to passing so they can be in athletics. So that's an option for families as well.
Thank you for clarifying that.
One of the things that we wanted to do at the high school level that's unique is because edgenuity is always available, I want to give our teachers an opportunity to engage in the summer and actually create some type of funding resource for them. But to give the kids, the most important aspect is to give the kids the depth and knowledge of an instructor and use the expertise of our teachers to be able to instruct during the summer hours that hasn't necessarily been offered in the past. Edgenuity is there, and teachers are there for supportive edgenuity. What we're hoping for is the depth coming back into the classroom and students sitting in front of teachers, as Mr. Powell alluded to, to get that depth. And I was hoping for, and I shared this with Ms. Batson earlier, that I was hoping for a lot more numbers because I see the number of students that have the need to pick up some additional credits, but we can't make it mandatory in the summertime. That's another dilemma, that's another obstacle moving forward. But there are a lot of avenues for students, especially at the high school level, to gain credits in different ways, which is great, and it gives them opportunities to stay on track and graduate. But we're still missing that depth in that. There's a reason that I have to be on edgenuity. I miss something along the way. And our goal and our hope for summer school, and the reason it's set up different than the K-eight, is to give that opportunity for depth. But there's still the opportunity to gain credit.
Thank you.
I have a question, reference how this all impacts on Matt's crew because summertime is when they go in there and do lots of repairs and lots of the deep stuff that gets done once a year. And I'm just wondering how, I mean, two of the elementaries are going to be empty, that's fine, that doesn't impact them at all. But at Henry Leavenworth, at Warren, and at the high school, that's going to require a lot of flexible scheduling.
Well, first off, let me just say Matt Dekke is amazing and is wonderful to work with. And in there, he has been so very flexible. At Henry Leavenworth, in the month of June, we have ESY program as well as this summer school, and we have construction for the collab spaces. So he has, you know, marked off that here's ESY's area, here is the summer programs area, here's the no-go area for construction. At the intermediate and the middle, we have certain areas that we'll be in. So in the month of June, we'll be in specific pods. So they will work on the floors and the moving and all the normal maintenance that goes on the summer. On those pods in July, we'll switch to a different pod, so those can be done in there. But absolutely, Matt has been wonderful to work with.
He always is. Any further questions from the board? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to number nine, superintendent board.
Okay, as I take off my mask, one of the things that I know that the board has asked, and I've been asked by community to address with the board. So therefore, I think this is the prime opportunity to make a recommendation to the board, to start the conversation and then go forward with what the board would choose to do at that point in time. But the recommendation, I've talked with my cabinet, I've talked with all the principals today, shared with them what my thought was moving forward, or our thought from a cabinet moving forward, to see if there was any objection or anything that need tweaked moving forward. And so our ultimate goal has been all year long is to stay in school as long as we can. Masks help mitigate and some of the exposures and things to that nature to allow us to do that. Upon this recommendation, before I give it, I want the board to understand quarantine, to my understanding, is not going away. And the liability of not quarantining on exposures puts the district at a very large liability stake. If somebody would contract it in school when we don't follow the proper guidelines set forth by the CDC, which really comes down to quarantine from this point forward, or at the end of the school forward, that the board really needs to consider. So all the things that Ms. Batson went through. If a student or a person in that classroom works and people are unmasked and somebody's positive, that classroom, everybody that's unmasked, is quarantined for fourteen days. If they're masked, then there's certain protocols that they can follow until they share a symptom, and their quarantine may be fourteen days, it may not be. If they're masked and have the vaccination, there's no quarantine at all unless they start showing symptoms. So there's still levels that we'll have to follow all the way into the fall. So when I say that, I wanted the board to be aware of, there's still risk. It's not going away. And there's still protocol that I believe that we need to follow because if not, it puts us in a very liable state for not only the safety of staff and students, but for litigation purposes and exposure that way as well. So with that, it would be the recommendation from me to the board, and I represent a conversation with all of my admin. I told them that they had to speak today or forever hold their peace. And then I said they can always speak, so it was kind of jokingly said. But it would be the recommendation to the board that at conclusion of the 2021 school year, that masks are optional for summer school. We'll evaluate again based on exposures, what we see, what we deal with during summer school, and moving forward from that point as optional opportunities. Naturally, we'll continue to monitor and communicate with the county health department. We'll continue to monitor the gating criteria. If we see spikes or we see exposure, we would call a meeting of this board to change that back to mandatory, if that's what the data, or if that's what the community would be asking for at that time. As I met with a community member today, one of the things that I tried to illustrate is that this is a very large teeter totter. You're going to have a lot, a percentage that says, want to say mask. You're going to have a large percentage that wants to say unmasked. And that teeter totter will continue to do this until everyone feels comfortable with where we're at as a nation with the pandemic. And we're balancing, you as a board, us as a district, is trying to balance that teeter totter to the safety of students, regardless of my feelings toward masks, my personal feelings toward masks, or those types of things. There's still, the scientists, the doctors saying one thing. You have, you know, politicians and things saying one thing. You have, everything is very, without a lack of a better term, controversial when it comes to masks. The city, I believe on the twenty-seventh of this month, are not requiring masks in any city building. It's optional at that point in time. They are currently holding in-person meetings, still requiring masks, but in-person meetings. But those are some of the things that I will, you know, kind of throw out, I throw out there for you to discuss or throw back at me to just a discussion of personal preference and then what you believe is best for us as a district moving forward. And I think this is a great opportunity, once again, for the board to make the decision based on the majority of what you feel.
Anybody want to start off?
I'd like to make a motion to make masks optional. To make masks optional beginning the end of the 2021 school year.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Murphy and a second by Mr. Powell. It's time for discussion. Anybody want to add anything?
Well, I'm comfortable with the fact that if it needs to be, and numbers show that it's still something we can revisit again. Seems like nothing's made in stone anymore. Never, ever was, nothing's ever been made in stone with any of our decisions. So that if something is happening, we have a way to regress and go back and reinforce it. But right now, according to the great gating criteria, we were solid green all the way through.
Yeah, we're green again today.
We probably have over fifty percent of our population within certain age groups has already at least had one, if not both, of their vaccines.
Twelve-year-olds and above, I believe, just didn't.
No, the FDA, I think, take that decision in the tenth of June.
And even then, that's still experimental, so you can't get a lot of parents that are going to round up wanting to do that right now. They're not the ones that are really getting sick, that are in danger in any way.
Well, one thing that the CDC did say, that I could bring to the board for the board's consideration, is that young children outside don't necessarily need to wear a mask. And I was hoping, well, my wish is that the board decides that perhaps we could let the kids lose the mask if they're outside.
I honestly have no problem with that either.
I understand inside, but when you're outside, and that's the safest place for them to be. And as far as I personally, I'm not speaking for the board, of course. If a teacher wants to take their class outside, separate them out sixty, park underneath an oak tree, that'd be a great way to do it, or use that outside classroom at the intermediate.
Isn't that by definition what the optional means, that children doesn't want?
Right.
Yeah, but you said optional at the end of the school year.
Who you're based on.
My discussion is tomorrow, at recess, take them off if they wish it.
So what we would be doing if we did do that would be modify the motion to that we would have masks optional starting indoors at the end of the 2021 school season. But, or no, you know, optional indoors, but outdoors, the same, that they don't have to wear, starting now.
Okay, that's what I think. Starting tomorrow, let me try to repeat.
Starting tomorrow, masks would be optional outdoors. And indoors, if they become optional at the end of the 2021 school year.
So can I?
Yeah, I was going to ask that, it's going to be the next thing.
So one of the things I want the board to consider, because I know, I know, and I totally concur with Mr. Darling, but you still have that quarantine option that if masks aren't involved, it can change the calendar moving forward. And I think it's Belton, Missouri, and I think a school, one of the schools in Olathe are having to do multiple graduations because of a quarantine issue. And then the goal of ours, and I believe the board supported, was to try to get to the end of the school year as much as we can. And even though it's recess and that, if there's, I'm just going to give an example, it may not, it may not ever come to be, and we've experienced that as well, but Mr. Powell and Mr. Carney and I are all out of recess. I'm positive, he's unmasked and he's unmasked. Now he is quarantined, he's got an older brother and older sister at home. Those quarantines can level out, and it could affect somebody at the high school level, or it could affect a senior or a group of seniors based on how all of that plays out. I will tell this board right now, and my team gets tired of hearing me say it, I'm ready for masks to go away. I want normalcy as much as possible. But as I told the patron today, my goal, and my, it's not my personal feeling, it's what is best for the entire district, students' sap alike. So I totally support Mr. Darling in his request. I just, I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't lay out the different layers that could truly be affected when we're ten days, eleven days away from graduation.
So that was going to be something I was going to point out, is that it's only, what, eleven days till graduation? And then, what, an extra five days after that, and then we're done. So I think we can make it till then as is, and then pull the trigger on optional after that.
So I personally like the idea of having summer school as the opportunity to see how it goes with masks optional, and then revisit it before we start the fall school year to make a decision going forward with what the 2021 and 22 school year looks like.
And as I understood it, it was a masks or social distance of six feet.
It really was.
That was always the original guidance.
We just took the extra step.
We've always gone the extra mile and just said, let's just keep both.
In a lot of ways, in a lot of our classrooms, one of the things that we didn't do is teleport kids. That was the other request, we wanted the flexibility with kids to move and experience it, especially at the high school level and the middle school level. So to be able to keep six-foot distancing was almost impossible without really changing and really restricting movements of kids. And I really never got that feeling that that's a direction that the board would want to go with that. And so now the guideline's not six feet anymore. They've lowered it down to three foot, which is a lot easier to maneuver through a three foot. Most of our classrooms can handle, not all of them, but a lot, most of them can handle a three-foot separation. And realistically, most of the time, they're over two foot away anyway when you put desks in. And then aisleways for ADA compliant, things like that, you're pretty close to a lot of those measurements anyway. But the optional, making it optional would really bring it back to the ones, including staff members that would like to wear, continue to wear masks for protection. They would be allowed to, students or families that would want to keep students in masks. That would be all, all we would do is make it school appropriate, just like it has been. We still wouldn't, you know, the masks would still need to be school-appropriate. We still wouldn't, you know, the masks would still need to be school appropriate in that, in that manner. But again, I just want to throw out different scenarios to you as a board, so you have an opportunity to kind of see different layers of how it could play out and how, how it may play out even in the future.
So summer school would be continuation?
It would be optional.
And what about the, the bus company, did they follow our rules, did they get the right?
When I met with the Eastern Bus this past week, we talked, whatever the board would decide is what they would do on, on the, on the buses as well. Because it, it would be too hard and too confusing to say, on a bus you got to, but in a classroom you don't have to. So whatever the board would choose, if the board would choose optional moving forward, it would be optional in all phases of our, from summer waits to all of those types of things, it would be optional.
Bus companies would love hearing that.
Probably so.
No, I know so.
All right. So I, we can't, I think we probably ought to just hold the board, and then we'll go revisit the motion and the second we already have, if that's okay with the board. Mrs. Price, what do you feel like?
It's our optional with summer school, otherwise you're taking masks again.
Okay, thank you.
Definitely optional in summer school. The only reason why I would say even optional now is just every day I go to the high school, I see half the kids that don't have their mask and very personal PDA, so I know that they're already exchanging things and have been exchanging things in the parking lot.
It's them breaking the rules.
No, no, I, I realize that. So if we've had any contaminated sources, you know, it's not pointing fingers, I just know there has been various types of exposures. So, I mean, that's what I've seen.
So it's, sound like me, like you would go back to your original.
Yeah.
Motion. Okay. Mr. Gooden?
That's, that's kind of how I feel. We're, we're almost to the end of the school year. We can make it till then, and then we build optional for the summer.
Mrs. Wells?
I agree with that.
Mr. Kern?
Well, I mean, what's, what's, 10, 11, how many days?
Eleven.
Eleven days. What's 11 days, start it now. Make people happy during the school year, what?
We're going to discuss.
I would have liked to have visited the doctor of graduates not having to wear the mask for graduation.
I have kind of an intense burning difference to either option personally, you know? But at, at, at the very least, Dr. Rose is bringing up a good point as far as liability concerns. That would be probably the only thing that would lead me towards.
Keeping it still.
Keeping it until the end of the school year.
And then summer school, we get.
Well, we're under the same sort of liability, you can go summer school.
If you don't follow CDC guidelines, you're setting yourself up for liability, yes. And the CDC guidelines mean that if, if you're quarantined and I don't quarantine you, or we don't follow the quarantine, and then another exposure happens, and God forbid anything beyond that happens, from a staff member to a student to whatever, they, they could come back on the source. Now, if you're following all the guidelines, then you're protected. So if you quarantine, and we quarantine for 14 days, we're, we're doing everything under the guidelines to do that at that point in time. Because you're also following your county, your county and local guidelines as well. But the quarantine, unless that quarantine goes away, that's the, that's the, the, the piece of disruption. And so, and in summer school, we would, if a student or a staff member or somebody's positive, and it's a known positive, the exposure of the individuals that are exposed would be quarantined.
Let me, let me ask this, because I think this is where it's always been somewhat confusing. Outside, pretty much they're saying we don't need masks. Inside, it was masks or six foot. Then it was masks or three foot.
So.
So do we, if we wear three foot and we've got great ventilation, we're still within the guideline?
I can still be at an outside family event, outside. And I'm in a group, we're sitting at a table, and there's an exposure, even though I'm outside, I'm still a close contact. The likelihood of transmission outside is not good, but they haven't lifted close contact rules on outside. They just say that's the safest way to get in a group. So there's still that line of exposure even outside. So the, the thing is, is that outside is the safest place to be, and there's less exposure opportunities. So even in the quarantine, the chances of Mr. Powell catching it because we're outside is less to him, but it's still, my understanding is still a quarantine opportunity.
Yep, that's if we have exposures of less than three feet for the specified timeframe, am I correct?
Yes, but if you're in a classroom or a family meal, that, that would.
Well, outside, most of it's.
Are longer than 15 minutes, right?
Yeah, but still the point is, if we follow the protocols that we've gotten up to this point as much as we can, we're all, the only protocol we're talking about pulling away, unless I misunderstand, is masks. So we should still be looking at, at the teachers and the interns and all, trying to keep some separation. Three feet's not, you know, that's actually not much. So I, I think, to my polling point, is I think that we're safe. As reasonably safe as we can, to take a new step to try to open this back up. However, I think Dr. Rose's point is very well taken, at least by me, and that is, you know, we got a lot of days. Maybe we open it up for graduation so they can walk across, if we're not going to affect the outcome of their graduation. But, you know, I don't want to be a part of maybe impacting a whole class, graduated class with, because we know that probably between now and graduation, there are going to be large groups of them getting together, you know, final celebration, so exposure becomes really important at that point, so. It would, it would, so by now, we'd be happy.
Okay, so you're going back to your original second.
Going back to my original second.
Okay. Just to make clear, we dropped mask requirement for summer school, they stay for the rest, that's the motion. And that will be your second. Any more discussion? I do appreciate everybody's civility, and this discussion is a hot-button topic. And Dr. Rose, I appreciate you and your representation of the admin team and the district leadership. So all those in favor of that motion? Seven zero. Say a mask. All right.
Well, that's the parade and then graduation, we're going to get there.
The parade is just an FYI. One of the things that actually came extremely, was an extreme positive last, last parade, was the parade for graduates, and the city has granted us permission to continue that. So if you see back on your, it's on the dates when, when we go, the, the parade will be on the 21st, and it will be at 10 o'clock, or 6 o'clock, right, Brenda? So it'll be at 10 o'clock on the 21st. The 21st.
1800.
On the 21st. Yeah, 21st at 6 o'clock. The day before graduation, Friday from, it will be from Warren parking lot to the high school parking lot. In the past, or last week in the past, last year, there was a designated spot, speaking with Ms. Wells and Mr. Darling on Wednesday. They felt like if you just want to spread out anywhere along that parade, if you're able to attend, feel free to do so.
I do request the parade participants take their balloons off after the thing's over, so they don't. Masking tape doesn't hold when they're going 40 miles an hour down 20th Street. And those balloons were there for weeks.
Yes.
So when we say from the Warren parking lot, is there a certain street that they are coming out of?
10th Street to the end of.
But like the traffic light at Warren? The traffic light at Warren?
So they'll come out, right, they'll, they'll, they'll do like last year, they'll get lined up in the Warren parking lot by the ball fields.
Okay.
Use all that, then they'll come out, come up 10th Street, go to the north side of the high school parking lot, come in on the west side of the parking lot, and then start dispersing from there back to side streets, is what they did last year.
Past the high school, Arnold Holgermann.
Some, some, some will probably just continue on and leave, and they're returning in. But the parade route would be 10th Avenue.
And we'll have police support there.
Yes, it was very well supported.
Last year.
By the city, and they agreed to do that as well this year, so we're excited about that. So graduation, couple of things on graduation. I, I heard Ms. Schumaker say earlier, your gowns are here. I know masks are, we've got graduation masks, a little different, for you to take with you. One of the things that Mr. Darling and Ms. Wells and I talked about on Wednesday was presenting the opportunity, and I spoke with Ms. Jones about the mask. The idea right now would be to have the graduates wear the mask in the, in the processional and recessional. But when they got to their seat, if they chose to, because it is outside, all of them will be three foot apart. If they want to remove their mask, as they walk across the stage, or sit and walk across the stage, that, that would be.
Acceptable.
Acceptable, but we would like for the, the walk-in and the walk-out, because they will be interacting with the possibility of some of our staff that would still be remaining for the next week of classes. With that being said, graduation has changed from what you've seen in the past. In the past, we've had two sides, two entry points, alternating names coming to the middle and going out, which led to opportunities for the board. This year, coming out of one end, walking out the other, the stage has shrunk down a little bit. And so what we have is Mr. Darling and Ms. Wells sitting on the stage, and then the rest of you right off the stage, so right after the graduate takes a picture with the photograph, then it would be able to shake hands with each of you, and we'd be able to offer your congratulations at that point. In order to keep the stage socially distanced, that, that was, so Mr. Darling and Ms. Wells will be on the stage, then each of you will have a seat just off the stage beyond, and an opportunity to greet each graduate as they walk by. Questions on the masks, does that sound okay to the board?
Well, since it is modifying our policy, because it is a modification of policy, do we need a motion to modify for graduation?
I think we do.
I'd like to make a motion, or offer a motion, that for the period of time of the graduation, the graduates, it's optional from seating to crossing the, the stage to receive their diploma, for them to wear their masks.
We have a motion by Mr. Powell, and a second by Mrs. Wells, to make it optional to wear masks on the field after we, they're seated until it's time to have the session. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Seven zero. All right, anything else?
Just, just, I guess, remarks to the board. One of the things I shared with the staff, the principals today, and the, the stance that the board has taken hasn't always been received by one side or the other. But the, the point I'm making on that is, everything that you have done, and I, and I say this in all sincerity, everything that you have done, you've had a kid's first approach. And not every school district can say that. And I, and I tell my, I told my admin the same thing today. The things this district has accomplished this school year has not been easy. And it hasn't been without tears, it hasn't been without fear, it hasn't been without panic, and it hasn't been without disagreements. But to stand the way you have stood, and the decisions to decide, the things that you had to decide are second to none. And as I said before, it's definitely okay not to be seven oh. And it's, and it's very hard not to, not to vote with emotion. And being able to witness the emotion coming out of your talks, the emotion coming out of your decisions, is what made this school year successful. And I know you've taken a meeting, and probably some emails and some conversations and things like that. But look back at this school year, and the interruptions that we've had have been very minimal compared to a lot of our area schools, not only across this state, but other states as well. And it takes leadership, and it takes guts to do what you did, and so my party shot is just, thank you. Thank you for doing what you do. And it's not easy, and until people walk those shoes or see those, sit in those seats, they don't know the pressure that you're on when it comes to making the decisions that you had to make this year. And I thank you for the support, and more importantly, I thank you for the guidance.
Thank you, Dr. Rose. Moving on to get to item number 10, executive session for negotiations.
Mr. President, I move to go into executive session to discuss negotiations pursuant to the exception for employer-employee negotiations under the Kansas Open Meetings Act, and that we return into open session in this room in 15 minutes. Do we need a potty break before, or are we good, because we have another executive session? Okay, so.
Well, we just make it a quarter till.
Okay, so we will return here at 7:45. We, the board would like to invite Dr. Rose, Amy Sloan, and Beth Maddox. Do we not have a board attorney tonight?
He's available by phone if necessary.
Okay.
We have a motion by Mrs. Wells, a second by Mrs. Price, all those in favor? Seven oh. All right, we're back in open session. Moving on to agenda item number 11, executive session for non-elected personnel.
Mr. President, I move to go into executive session to discuss non-elected personnel pursuant to the exception under the Kansas Open Meetings Act, in order to protect the privacy interests of the individuals to be discussed, and that we return to open session in this room in 30 minutes at 8:15 with a five-minute potty break, so at 8:20, please. We would like to invite Dr. Rose, Amy Sloan, Beth Maddox, and Laura Batson into the meeting.
Okay. All those in favor? Seven zero. Yep, we're sitting live now.
Yep, we're all live.
All right, we're back in open session.
Mr. President, due to a personal conflict interest, a personal conflict interest on the staffing report, in order to maintain the integrity and professionalism of the board, I ask that I may be excused to the next room so that I may formally recuse myself from the vote on the staffing report, and then if you would please invite me back in for the other votes.
All right.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I would like to approve the staffing report.
Move to approve.
Move to approve, hold on, let me do this again. I move the board through the staffing report as presented, and to approve a pool of 3% for classified staff.
That probably needs to be a separate motion.
It's all together.
Oh, it is?
And to approve a pool of 3% for classified staff raises, and to approve a pool of 2% of administrative staff raises. Please note that April 12, 2021, Board of Education meeting, the board approved a $1 per hour, excuse me, per hour increase for paraprofessionals beginning August 1, 2021, so that did not include them.
We have a motion by Mrs. Wells and a second by Mrs. Price, all those in favor? Six zero, Jackie Dean, please, please. All right. All right. Now. Don't we need a motion on what we were?
Can we get a motion to approve?
The spending of ESTR dollars?
The hiring of staff using ESTR dollars.
Do you want that dollar or not, or?
Just.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to approve additional staff positions being created and hired using the ESTR dollars that we've been allocated.
Second. A motion by Mrs. Wells and I'll give the second to Mr. Goodman. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Seven zero.
And those staff positions will be posted by the end of this week.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to agenda item 13, community information. 13.1, Lower City Commission, we've got minutes for the 23rd of March and the 13th of April. And we have the Lower City County Commission minutes for March of this year. Upcoming dates, graduation. Okay, excuse me, I didn't scroll far enough. 19th is retiring celebration. 20th is senior awards night, is a virtual event, are we gonna get a Zoom invitation to that or?
Do you know, Jake?
I filmed it today, it'll be on YouTube.
Okay.
Will it be released like we did the graduation release? Or is it just gonna be available?
Okay. All right, May 21st is the LAJES graduation. Second of May, graduation Pioneer Stadium at 10:30 in the morning.
Board members, the high school office will meet at the high school office gown up. You can store any personal items there that you would choose to. And then once the graduates get ready to go out, we'll go out with them.
You'll all have reserved parking spots?
You'll have reserved parking spots like before. And if you could be at the high school office by between, as close to 9:45 as possible, that'd give us time to get everything in line and be ready to head out when the graduates are.
Brand paperclip on the, are we going down to the south end of the field?
No, graduation will be in front of the main stadium.
Much like the ROTC one.
Right, so the stadium will be facing the main stadium, so it'll be facing the west.
And 26th, last day of school for the kids. And then we have our next four meeting on 14th June. Any unscheduled patron input? Nope. More member comments, Mrs. Price.
Okay, so May is one of those crazy months in a school year where it's the ending of something and the starting of something else. It's been a very challenging year for everybody, but I want to say that I appreciate everyone's patience to get to this point because now we can all celebrate the graduation of the class at 12:00. That's all I have, the pioneers.
Thank you. Mrs. Murphy?
I just wanted to give everybody a reminder that this week there is play at the high school. So you can, you have to set your little bubbles of pause, but you can probably get tickets for that. It's gonna be a very enjoyable event, so go support our best friends. Another, just wanted to go ahead and say again what a phenomenal year that we had with JROTC, the Cowery Angels, our drill team, the Raiders. How successful it has been with the crowds on the softball and baseball fields. I don't think I've seen so many smiling faces in a very long time of, of parents and their kids just enjoying the air and, and good sportsmanship and the camaraderie that goes with it. I also saw on the gift log another entry, that was quite a phenomenal donation of those books. And just, you know, thank you to everyone that donates to our kids in the schools, but that one was especially generous and just thank you so very much. I know it's gonna go a very long way. And I look forward to seeing everybody with the graduation and the party. Enjoy yourselves, stay safe, do not drink and drive, do not drive crazy and fast, wear your seat belts. We want to be able to see you go down that aisle and get your diplomas and thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Murphy.
Mr. Goodman?
I'd add along with what Mrs. Murphy said, I've thoroughly enjoyed all the events. It seems to accelerate faster and faster now with all the things that are going on. Enjoyed the ROTC performance, that was a fun event to attend. Grateful for all the staff and all of our teachers for supporting those events. They, they keep thanking us, but a lot of, a lot of thanks runs to them as well. So I'm looking forward to, graduation is, is one of my favorite events to attend, so looking forward to that event.
Thank you, Mr. Goodman. Mrs. Wells?
I just want to thank our staff in and out of the classroom for everything that they've done this year. Last week was teacher appreciation week, but that is encompassing all staff in my opinion. You guys are heroes each and every day. You're raising America's tomorrow and you guys know that and I want you to know I know it as well. I'm super excited about the end of the school year and the families that are able to take advantage of our summer program. I really hope that you do, I think it's gonna be beneficial to the kids. It's gonna be fun as well as educational. And I think that we're gonna pull this off right and hopefully with the mask optional, that's going to give us a good indication as to what next school year will look like. So please participate and have fun and let's have a successful end of the school year.
Thank you, Mrs. Wells. Mr. Carney?
If I had a hat on, I'd like to take it off to the, the people involved in putting on the 5K run for the intermediate school last Saturday. A little nervous when it was raining when I got up, the sun came out and had a good, pretty good turnout for the first time. There's 50 people to include parents and first started Cogville and some Raiders helped on the streets, of course, it was a pretty little town. And he asked me if I was gonna run and I said, well, I would except it'd be dark when I got back and the timer would probably be gone, so I, no, I just stayed the whole thing. Proud to say my granddaughter was a fast finisher, she beat everybody in the girl division and most of the boys.
Thank you, Mr. Carney. Mr. Powell?
You know, I never thought that two words would describe, you know, how we spent this last year. One of them is courage and the other is despite. And that, it's just amazing the, what I've seen this school district and our community do despite what the COVID and all of the other things that go along with it have occurred. And I just, I, I can't say enough about what I've seen in the schools, you know, in the classrooms and what work that the administration's done to try to make normal for our kids. And that takes courage. And so I would say the same for our parents and our kids and that makes this graduation all the more, I guess, rewarding is because COVID still exists, yes, you described it very well, all the, you know, all the things that we've dealt with this year still exist. But yet this administration and, and I think this board, I think each of you, board members, that we're in a position to where we're gonna give these kids a graduation, we're gonna give them a parade. You know, it's, it's a start, not a finish, and that's, to me, is just amazing. So thank you, you know, for all you're doing, the teachers that are out there. You know, I spent some time earlier this, in December with a lot of the teachers in the high school and it, and it was a despite and courage, and it really was. So I thank, you know, all of you for what you've done to get our kids to this point. And just caution that as we go into the next year, we've got some work to do to help these kids recover what COVID's taken from those that we still have in school, that's our next challenge. Thank you, Dr. Roth, the staff.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. I'll second what everyone else has said, it's been an incredible year. High school kids have done unbelievable when faced with challenges that I could not have imagined dealing with. I do have one question for Mrs. Batson. The assessments that were going on at the end of April, first part of May, will be July, August when we see those things?
Likely June, the status of results will come out in the weekend, it'll be 24th. And we're brought, we can't do those, organized, technical, but likely in June.
Okay, that's a lot faster than I thought. Appreciate that and I appreciate what everybody in the district does for our kids every day. So with that, meeting.